Good morning, everyone. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is July 1st, 2020. I'm joined today by Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Giffens, and I'm going to read our public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And with that, we will turn to department updates. We'll begin with Ms. Cottle from the Health Department.
Good morning. Thank you. Just want to start with some local data and kind of provide you where we were at the end of yesterday. Certainly, new cases will get reported by noon today. As of 6:30 20, we had 244 cases confirmed on people who reside in Monroe County, and we had a positivity rate of 3.2%. So that is a good number. Obviously, we would like it to be much lower than that, but that is a good sign for us. We are also seeing a correlation between increased testing and increase in positive cases. On the days that we are seeing increase in testing, those are the days that we tend to see the biggest increase in reported cases as well. But those two things do remind us that the virus is still in our community. So even though our positivity rate may be low, we know that virus is circulating. So just a reminder that we are safest when we act as if anyone that we may come in contact with would be infected, and that we consider ourselves potentially infected and asymptomatic. So those are important things to recognize around this virus. The Optum site, the testing site at the Armory, has been doing anywhere from about 80 to 125 or more tests per day. And those numbers are even when they are having to close early due to the heat. The location that they are in does not have air conditioning, and the staff are wearing personal protective equipment that these very high temperatures can be harmful for their safety. So they have had to close several days early, and they will be closing today early as well, I think at 3:00 PM. And then they have been trying to work those individuals that have to be rescheduled kind of back into the appointment cycle. So they will be closing again, but they are doing a large amount of testing. If you keep in mind that their normal flow expectation is to do about 132 tests a day, and some days they've done 125 tests and even closed early. So they are really putting people through, and that's great. The staff there is working very, very hard to serve people. They are switching from the tests that they've been doing to the nasal pharyngeal swab so that will go deeper into the nasal cavity for people. So just so you know that. And then the Indiana State Department of Health has reported that they are about to complete the testing on employees at all long-term care type facilities in the state of Indiana. And while I don't recall the exact number, I want to say it is like 50,000 people or something like that. It was a large number of people that they were testing that were working in long-term care type facilities. So that was a big accomplishment for them, and I know that they wanted that done by early July, and I think that they will be meeting that goal. By July 4th, all long-term care facilities must provide some sort of outdoor visitation that's consistent with guidelines. And there are some other visitation requirements that are set forth for long-term care facilities as well. While our local data, hospital capacity, or percentage rate of positives are all good, we know that it's not the case across the country, and we are not blind to that. We are continuing to monitor locally but as well as nationally so that we can respond appropriately and be proactive. And I know that there's lots of different feelings about what that might look like, but let me just kind of tell you where we are. A new Monroe County health order will be released tomorrow. We will be continuing the bar top protection of supplies and food that might be just across the bar top in restaurants and bars that have bar top service. So a bar or a restaurant could just simply not seat anyone at their bar top, or they can protect anything, glassware, condiments, those kinds of things, garnishes that might be on the other side of that bar. And that could be from a barrier, it could be space, they move those things, what have you. So that will stay in place. Bars and restaurants should expect that to stay in place for quite some time. Gathering size will likely be adjusted and will stay below the state limit, and we will be adding a sign requirement for all businesses regarding face coverings. So that will be a first step, just reminding people that they should be wearing a face covering. It's recommended for everyone when they are in any kind of retail business. So that will be an addition that will be coming in this new order. Once we know what Indiana is doing, if we're staying as a state in stage four, if we're going to stage five, if there's going to be some hybrid that the governor is going to release, he should announce that this afternoon late, and then we will be able to look at that, finalize our local order so that it can go out as soon as possible. The order will be in effect until revised or repealed, and during that time, we will be finalizing our plans for what types of interventions we want to have in place when our population expands. That will likely include some sort of requirement around face coverings, but we do have to look at what that says exactly, where, when, how, and we have to look at enforcement. So those are all fine, those fine details that have to be worked out. And certainly, that cannot be the only thing that we put in place. It can't be the only step that we put in place to try to control and limit the exposure that we have in our community. So we are working on those things. I want, if anyone didn't think that we were, I want to clear that up. We have been, and we will be finalizing that. So the new health order will come out tomorrow, and then it will be in effect until we have these new guidelines finalized, and then we will release that. And the last thing I would say is, it is July 1st, and there are a lot of new legislative laws that have went into place, and I'm just going to highlight a few of them. Tobacco and vaping, smoking age, so the law raises the age to buy tobacco and vaping products from 18 to 21 years of age. There's a new sexual assault victims' right law. This law provides rights to sexual assault victims, including the right to speak with a victim advocate or a victim service provider if available, or a social worker. Insulin drugs, this law allows Hoosiers to purchase insulin from a pharmacist without a prescription. And distracted driving, Indiana law will prohibit holding mobile devices such as smartphones, tablets, in their hands while driving to reduce distracted driving and improve safety on Hoosier roadways. There are some other ones as well, but the other one that I will note, I guess I almost missed this one, is drinking water testing. School buildings will have to have their drinking water tested before January 1st of 2023 to determine whether drinking levels test positive for lead. And again, there are others as well, but I just wanted to highlight those. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Cottle. We appreciate you and everyone on the board, and Dr. Sharp, of course. Any comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Not right now.
Commissioner Giffens?
Will the governor be doing a press conference to announce his decisions today? And if so, at what time?
He usually does his press conference at 2:30 on Wednesdays. So we will have, I have another meeting that coincides with that most every Wednesday, but we'll have staff watching that so that we can get that information as soon as it's released. They do not share what's coming with us ahead of time.
Thank you again so much. Next up is Alison Moore, Emergency Management. Good morning.
Good morning. We are out driving supplies around today. But Kate, our deputy director's driving, so I'm doing this in the passenger seat. Thanks for allowing me to join. I wanted to give a report on our blood drives. We have now had two blood drives in Monroe County. Yesterday was our second, and it was a success. We had every spot filled that was available, and all of those individuals did in fact arrive. So that's always a very successful day. We did get the results from our first blood drive. We don't have the results of how much units were collected yesterday, but our first blood drive collected 34 units of blood, which could potentially save the lives of 102 individuals. So super excited about those results. We met the Red Cross's goal of 126%. So not only did we meet their goal, we went above and beyond what their goals were. So wonderful about that, I have a feeling that tomorrow's results will come in very similar to that first blood drive. We have another blood drive scheduled because we do in fact continue to have such a dire need in our community due to COVID, and that is scheduled for July 17th. There are still spots available for that drive. It will be at the Monroe County Convention Center. The information to sign up is on our county website at co.munro.in.us. You do in fact go to the redcross.org website, and then you put in the Monroe County zip code, and it will pull up that date. We do have potential to have one additional blood drive beyond the July 17th date, and that date will be forthcoming. It will be towards the very end of July. Just so if this...
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Just really pleased to hear how very successful it was, and I hope the next one and possibly the one after that are equally so.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I wish you didn't have to wait 56 days between donating, you know, but that's Red Cross's requirements. But yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a testament to our community as a whole, that's for sure. Excellent. Thank you so much. Now we go to Lisa Ridge for a road update, traffic update. Ms. Ridge, morning.
So we're paving. This week is a short week. Of course, the guys, the crews at the highway garage are on 410s during summer hours so that they can pave longer hours. So they're prepping, I believe, at Swatch Ridge Road this week to pave it in a couple weeks. I believe next week it's North Maple Grove Road. They finished Bolting House Road, tree trimming, pothole patching, and the norm. I do want to say, like with our federal aid projects, with everything that goes on, if there's any public notice, those are still going out into the newspapers. But if there's something that's to be reviewed by the public, we are putting those on our website continuously. So any environmental documents, anything that anyone would want to look at, at any of our federal aid projects, what we're required to do for public comment, public opinion, it is posted on our website. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows that the federal aid project's still going, still want any public comment, but we're just trying to put it out there the best that we can. So that's about all we got.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Giffens?
No, I just want to point out that you do the 10-hour days so that they don't lose as much time going back and forth to the locations. So it actually makes them far more efficient.
Exactly. Like, for instance, when we were paving Bolting House Road, you know, the asphalt plant is over off Ord Road, which is completely opposite side of town. So it just gives you longer working hours, working six to four to be able to get more done in that day. So we've done it for many years now, and I know a lot of the government entities do that for those longer hours to, especially for paving.
Take advantage of the daylight. That's for sure. Excellent. Thank you so very much. Are there any other department heads who are attending who have an update to offer? You can raise your hand to let our folks know. While we're waiting on that, I do want to give a shout out to our amazing folks in the Technical Services Department, Eric Evans, the whole staff. You know, they have, as much as all these other groups and departments have been working, they have been working nonstop to keep us functioning. They are hosting all of our Zoom meetings, but there's so much more than that that they're doing, and we cannot thank them enough. So a huge hearty thank you from us to each member of staff. You are all amazing, and you've kept us going. You've kept county government going, and we can't thank you enough. So do we have any other departments that wish to offer an update?
There do not appear to be any hands raised.
Right. Thank you so much, Ms. Dayton, part of the great TSD team. Excellent. So with that, we will move to public comment. Public comment is reserved for items that are not on our agenda. And if you have an item for comment, can you please raise your hand, and Ms. Dayton will put you on, and there will be a countdown clock. You will be able to see on the screen. If you need a verbal reminder, if you don't have a screen visible to you, just let me know, and I will give you that notice.
All right. First up, we have Nathan Muchler.
Right, Mr. Muchler, please. Morning.
Good morning. I wanted to first off say that I hope that everyone has already taken advantage of reviewing the county council special meeting from yesterday, which was a very powerful and a very educational inspirational meeting. On that subject, one thing that I would like to challenge all of the county government is to really think about how these meetings look to the public. It is very frustrating to have the chat disabled, so we cannot talk amongst ourselves. It's very frustrating to not know if our comments are being received or who else is in the meeting the way that if we were in person, we could look around and see our support for each other. So I would encourage the county to lead its technical experts into thinking about how to do that best to accommodate and welcome all voices. I see on the agenda that there is a expansion of the juvenile deferment initiative, and I applaud every step this council takes, like the public, sorry, this commission takes, like the public statement at the beginning to work towards ending the oppression and the violence of, that is, American policing. I want to challenge you to have the moral courage and imagination to use the authority that is given to you to work urgently and every day to make sure that Bloomington is not the next city on the list of Minneapolis, Louisville, Indianapolis. I have every confidence in our community that we would come together, and we have come together in previous tragedies. But I ask you to find the moral courage to step up and say, I don't need to wait for it to be too late. I don't need to wait until someone is killed in our community. I don't need to wait until I am forced to act, or it is easy to act because there has been a sacrifice, for lack of a better word. So please, I encourage you and ask you to find that courage to use your power, use your authority with grace, imagination, and strength to actively and urgently and immediately work against oppression, systemic racism, and violence in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muchler. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Next up is Randy Paul.
Great. Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Paul.
Hi. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, I would just like to pick up where I left off last week. We talked about the ADA transition plan, the fact that you guys asked for public opinion and my help when you actually passed the plan the previous December. But then my concern is, is there's talk about, and now I got confirmed that the city is going to help you with your inspections. The city agency is a community, the Council for Community Access. I'm going to read a quote from the letter I received yesterday. If the ADA had real teeth in it, we might be able to do more in terms of enforcing more change and for people to figure out how to address ADA barriers. But we will work with those that we feel want to continue the work and make it an attempt to do the needed changes that are most relevant. So what they were, what they told me last week and confirmed this week is, they don't do ADA compliance inspections. They only do partial ones. And just like the old saying, two wrongs don't make a right, two incomplete surveys do not bring you to ADA compliance. And furthermore, the ADA cannot be rewritten, a federal law cannot be rewritten by the CCA or the county commissioners. The other issue I want to bring up is every meeting I listen to that statement you guys read where you claim to love everybody and won't discriminate against anybody. You discriminate against people with disabilities every day. You're out of compliance, and right now you're up to 27 years. I sent you on, before the meeting last, on the 18th, I sent you on the 16th, a how-to manual explaining how to do the surveys, the checklists, and even possible remedies for sites that need working on. You've got that in your office. This is not rocket science. You could probably pull middle-aged kids together, promise them pizza at the end, and they could do these inspections for you. Why are you so stubbornly refusing to do this? I don't understand. And you need to understand, I think, the people you're hurting. When I see you guys talking about listening to the protesters and Black Lives Matters and minority groups and people living in poverty, and you're listening to them right now, those are the people who are being hurt by this. Those are the ones that you're ignoring. And I think it's just patronizing for you to go through this exercise of saying, we're listening and we're concerned, when in fact you just are stubbornly refusing to go into compliance. Last issue, since I'm running out of time, is I think the only way we're going to get change is to redo government. We have a primarily white government. I think we need minorities represented on the county commissioners. I filed the paperwork to run in District 2, and I'm urging people to file, the deadline is July 6th, to run as a writing candidate in District 3. If you want real change, then we need to change our government and needs to stop being all white. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Do we have anyone else who wishes to make, offer public comment on an item not on our agenda?
There do not appear to be any hands raised.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. We appreciate you. All right. With that, we will move on to our next agenda item. Commissioner Jones, if you would, please.
Move approval of the minutes for June 24th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or edits, Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Giffens?
I sent just a few small edits to Ms. Freeman yesterday, so.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Cockrell's on vacation. Good for him. So we have Ms. Rice from the legal office. If you would call the roll, please.
Well, so I'm going to call the roll on the minutes from June 24th. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Julie Thomas, Lee Jones?
Yes.
Penny Giffens?
Yes.
Meeting minutes are approved.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket accounts payable July 1st, 2020, and payroll July 2nd, 2020.
Second.
Great. We have a motion, and we have a second. Mr. Miller?
Good morning.
Morning.
Our claims was $1,442,034.16. $548,271.58 was for the West Side Economic Development Richland Township TIF. $255,911.38 was for Wheel and Surtax Distribution for May. $10715.86 was for Beam Longest and F LLC for bridge design, maintenance, and inspection. As far as payroll, the total was $1,666,058.63. $1,070,052.86 were for direct costs, and $596,005, excuse me, $596,057.77 were for indirect costs.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Miller. We appreciate you. Any comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, these just always seem like such big numbers to me.
They are. All right. With that, is there anyone who wishes to offer public comment on this specific agenda item?
There do not appear to be any hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. With that, Ms. Rice, would you please call the roll on accounts payable July 1st, 2020, and payroll July 2nd, 2020?
I'd be happy to. Julie Thomas?
Yes.
Lee Jones?
Yes.
Penny Giffens?
Yes.
Okay, the approval of the claims docket passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. And now we will move on to new business.
Move to approve ratification of ASI facility services for the Youth Services Bureau. Fund name, lit special purpose, fund number 1114, in the amount of $600 bi-weekly.
Second.
Great. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Malone, if you would, please.
Yes, good morning. Thank, thank you. Yeah, we are seeking to have this ratified. We have had a clean contract in the past, but with the new building, we decided it was time to open things up and see if this was the best service that we could have. This is a contract that is currently held. ASI has a contract with other county buildings, so we're familiar with it, with their service and with their quality, and we're happy and hopeful that we'll be able to continue having their service for our new building, including the gymnasium and the classroom and all.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Malone. Comments or questions from Ms. Jones?
Sounds like something that's very needed right now, not because, only because of COVID.
Yeah. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, there's extra pressure due to COVID at this point. I really hope we get to see the new facility soon.
Well, we are, we are obviously going to be open with the rest of the county, you know, July 6th, but we are the shelter. We aren't, we still have to be very cautious as to who's coming into the area where the children are living. So people aren't going to be able to see that, but I would encourage you to reach out to the executive director, Vicky, my boss, and find a time where you can come see what has been really wonderful. They are still doing a few things. We're supposed to be getting some carpet and things like that. So maybe in the next, I'd say, month or so, we'd be happy to welcome any of you out to take a look through all the commissioners to have, see this wonderful building that the county's been able to provide for the community.
Fabulous, fabulous news. I'm glad that the project's winding up. It always takes those last few things, always take longer than you think they should. So, but it's an exciting project, and so happy for the kids, for the youth of Monroe County. And I sent, Ms. Rice, I sent, I had sent a question about this contract. Did you want to speak on that?
Yes. Ms. Thomas asked a question about whether we would have background checks for people who are going into the facility, and the answer to that is yes. This is a current vendor that we use is well familiar with those rules. And our contracts have a clause that says that people have to comply with local, state, and federal regulations, rules, and laws. And so... And so participating in background checks for this facility is part of that, and that we will definitely have that done.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Rice. I appreciate the clarification on that. And thank you, Mr. Malone. Any questions or comments from the public on this specific agenda item?
There do not appear to be any hands raised.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. And with that, Ms. Rice, if you would please call the roll on ratification of the ASI Facility Services for Youth Service Bureau.
Well, Julie Thomas?
Yes.
Lee Jones?
Yes.
Penny Giffens?
Yes.
Hey, the ratification of ASI Facility Services Agreement passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. And just a shout out to the great folks at ASI. They are amazing. I just remember when we had our massive freeze that two winters ago, and they covered the cost to keep the the Justice Building open as a warming center for the community. So they're amazing folks there. We appreciate their hard work all year round. Next item, please.
Move to approve the 2019-2020 Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative Coordination and Programming Grant Extension. Fund name, JDAI Coordination and Programming. Fund numbers, 9143 and 9145, in the amount of $54,523.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and we have a second. We have both Ms. McAfee and Mr. Hatfield on the call. So would one of you explain this for the public?
Yes. Hi, good morning. This is Christine McAfee. Are you able to see the PowerPoint we provided? No.
Give me just one moment, please.
Okay, thank you. Perfect. Thank you. So yes, this is the JDAI Alternatives Initiative. We have been involved in this program. We could go to the next slide. Here we go. Thank you. We joined JDAI in 2014, and we were the 19th county in Indiana. There are currently 32 counties. It is an Annie Casey Foundation initiative, and it is a juvenile justice reinvestment initiative. The idea is that detaining youth in detention centers or jails does not serve long-term goals for anyone. And so this initiative provides a framework to counties to try and use those same dollars and reinvest them in different ways. Next slide. Since our involvement with this program, we have received grant funds, and you can tell from this slide, they vary in amounts depending on how many state dollars are available, how many counties, those kinds of things. What we're looking at currently is the fiscal year 1920, and this grant was due to expire yesterday. However, because of the COVID-19 situation, many, many counties were faced with the inability to use funds as they had previously identified. So we're asking that this grant be extended through December 31, 2020. The next slide. We will have a grand total of almost half a million dollars brought into our community through these grant funds. And again, we use them for things like community engagement activities, training for staff, training for the community. We pay house arrest fees for youth who are placed on a house arrest as an alternative to detention. We've invested in programming, and we have invested in bringing folks to our community to help us learn how to do what we're doing better. There is also a second part. Could you go to the next slide, please? Thank you. So some of the highlights of this year, we're working with the Youth Services Bureau and some collaborative educational opportunities, human trafficking. We're working with Girls and Boy, Girls, Inc., and Boys and Girls Club to look at diversion opportunities for youth. Sometimes kids we deal with need additional supervision or structure, leadership opportunities, not necessarily things that can only be provided through the justice system. So looking at collaborating with community partners that are already experts in that field. And this, this grant cycle, we've launched a new initiative of youth family engagement, working with law enforcement on how can we provide them things like basketballs, footballs, jump ropes. They're out and about at one of our parks in the neighborhood, and they can stop and interact with youth and families. Kind of that caught you being good idea where not every interaction has to be one where it's an act of authority or some sort of punitive. The next slide is an opportunity to show off when the COVID-19 kind of stopped everyone in our track through the department. We created care packages for kids and families, and these were delivered by probation staff and our community correction staff. And they had things like playing cards and bubbles and games, things to just let the kids and families know we were thinking of them. You know, there was a lot of stuff on social media about we're all in this together. And while I think that's true in many extents, I do know that this pandemic has affected different people, different ways. And this was just kind of our way of reaching out to all of the youth and families that were involved in our system and just say, hey, we're thanking of you. The picture you see in front of you is Christian Carlisle, who is the supervisor for our community correction supervision program. We are preparing a third round of gift bags to go out, and that will be purchasing school supplies and helping offset some of those costs for our youth and families. We're also expanding it to not just the youth that the system involved, but we also want to support the other kids in the household. As most of you know, school supplies are extraordinarily expensive, and in this time when finances are are hard anyway, we thought this would be a good way to support our local school system, support our kids and families, and support the community. The last slide is just some quick data points. Since we began our involvement, 2013 was our baseline year because we started in 2014. So we've seen a decrease in detention population, the average daily population of just over 25%. We've seen a decrease in admissions of nearly 30%. We've seen the average length of stay increase slightly. And commenting on that, although that doesn't look good, the reality is, if we're placing the right kids in detention, it's not unlikely that we would see a slight increase in the length of stay. What we don't want to see are kids that go into detention for 28 hours or 48 hours that are in their very, very short periods of time, because the question arises, what was the community safety issue that was being resolved by placing this kid in detention? What else could we have been able to do for that short period of time? And then during our, in the time of the baseline, felony petitions have also decreased nearly 70%. That's the statistics that's really important to JDAI because they want to make sure that the community understands this is a community safety initiative. This is not a, quote, jail break where we're not ever going to detain anybody because we just don't think that that's the way to go. What it's saying is we don't want to detain kids that are unnecessary to be detained. And so we have had a strong decrease in the, excuse me, in felony petitions filed as well. So community safety has not been put at risk. And then the last slide is just thanks. And what kind of questions do you have?
Right. Thank you so much, Ms. McAfee. Commissioner Jones, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I'm just really pleased to hear that this initiative is being so successful. It's very hard for me to believe that any youth are helped through incarceration.
Good point. Commissioner Giffens?
I wanted to know what the likelihood is of a grant for the coming year. Want to applaud the, the work that's been done, of course, but also one of the things that, that we worry about with all this is recidivism rate, and I'd like to know 30 numbers on reducing recidivism. So to answer your first question, part two of my presentation today is the grant for next year. We have been awarded just under $60,000. And much of what we started this year, we will continue into next year. Some of the most important work I think we've been doing is in the area of race, equity, and inclusion, and we actually started that initiative. JDAI has eight core strategies or principles. And one of them is looking at the disproportional contact of minority gender socioeconomic across all of those gamuts. And we started that work back in May. We have a, a training that we're bringing to the community in partnership with YSB on anti-racism and the systemic implications of it, that it's not just a personal prejudice, bigot, bigot kind of mentality, but systemically how there are things in place that that drive this. We're also looking at currently, the REI Work Group is doing a virtual book club, and we are reading the book biased and having discussions weekly about how our implicit bias driving what we see, what we believe, what we think we already know. So that grant, again, that's part two. As to the question of recidivism, that is always a million-dollar question. I think one of the challenges coming up with the definition, what is recidivism? There's some really good research out of California, and it's probably about 12 years old, but it talks about the 8% solution. And what that means is about 8% of the kids in the juvenile justice system nationally are responsible for the largest percentage of resources that are utilized. So what we tried very, very hard to do is use risk assessments to make sure that we are targeting those moderate and high-risk youth, not just high-needs kids that get into the justice system and can't get out and can't get out. We're also looking at things, how to divert kids altogether from coming into the justice system. With the pandemic, we have seen an increase in domestic violence cases where kids and parents or kids and families are having altercations. Part of our grant is to bring in a national program from California called Step Up, and it's a family violence model where kids and families, kids and parents, caregivers, guardians, learn how to effectively communicate, negotiate, problem solve that, you know, those lack of coping skills, lack of problem-solving skills, and then you add the stressors of the current situation, and things erupt pretty quickly. So looking at ways to divert kids from our system, youth and families from the system. So the, the recidivism answer, we do not have a good answer on. We continue to look at that. We continue to look at what works, what doesn't. We know our cases right now are historically low, which is a wonderful, wonderful thing to be able to say. I think there are a lot of factors that play into that, but I hope that gives you some, some information.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Right. Thank you so much. Great, great answers, very thorough. We appreciate your hard work and everyone on the staff. With that, we'll open this up for public comment on this specific item.
It looks like we have one hand. Give me one moment.
Mr. Muchler?
There you go. Thank you. I just want to comment that this is, again, a really admirable initiative and a step in the right direction. Because these conversations are hard, and because there are so many barriers to communication right now, COVID-19 and other structural ones, I want to reemphasize the point that when I say defund the police, when I say defund the sheriff's department, that means there will be more money available for programs like this. So I would challenge this commission to list, to hear themselves when they say how wonderful and how appropriate this is, and how useful and how much of an impact it has, and to say, how can I do this more? And to really look critically with imagination and with courage at the budget to find more opportunities to fund programs that are effective and create equity and justice in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muchler. Is there anyone else that wishes to offer a public comment on this item?
Next up is Marty. Oh, nope, the hand just disappeared. Never mind.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Ms. Rice, would you please call the roll on the 2019-2020 JDAI Grant Extension?
Ms. Malone, Julie Thomas?
Yes.
Lee Jones? Lee Jones?
Yes.
Penny Giffens?
Yes.
Thank you. It passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rice. Next item, please.
Move to approve ratification of Indiana State Department of Health Agreement. Did we skip?
We, item C.
Yeah, I think that we just did part, what I just called the roll for was E, and now we're on to C, which is the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative, Initiative Grant.
I'm sorry, I crossed the wrong one off my agenda. Move to approve 2020-2021 Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative Coordination and Programming Grant. Fund name, JDAI Coordination and Programming. Fund number 9122 and 9123, in the amount of $59,139.
Second.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. McAfee.
Now, thank you. So everything I just said about JDAI and our community involvement in the dollars, that also stands. This grant is for the July 1 through June 20 of 2021. Typically, grant cycles run year to year, as we all know, but because of all of the issues with the pandemic, we're going to be in a six-month kind of double spread for the grant. But what we're looking at doing with the new dollars are the things I spoke to a moment ago, as far as bringing resources to the community, working with law enforcement, families, and working with engagement activities. The engagement, youth and family engagement is really a critical piece of this year's grant. We oftentimes sit around a table and talk about what others need, and this initiative really is requiring us to help bring those partners to the table with us and tell us what they need, what they want, not just us make decisions for them. We've had some conversations with the Indiana Youth Institute. We've had conversations with an agency up in Indianapolis, all of whom are experts in the field of youth and family engagement, and we really want that to be a driving piece of this year's grant.
Right. Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I think if, if you have it with you, it would be helpful to hear what the eight core strategies are.
Absolutely. The first one is collaboration, and the idea behind that is that oftentimes we like to work, we have worked in silos, so school systems are in a silo, law enforcement, probation, mental health services, medical services. And this, this initiative's foundation is collaboration, that these aren't my kids or your kids, they're our families. So everybody, everybody has a responsibility. The second one is use of accurate data. One of the things that JDAI prides itself on is making sure that we have data to show outcomes, that we don't just think we're doing well, or think we've made an impact, or think this is working, but how do we prove that? Objective admission criteria. So one of the first things we did when we began in the JDAI process is developed kind of a a check sheet for making a determination if the youth goes to security detention or not. And we all kind of had our own internal barometers for asking questions. And I will say that I think we were all, all juvenile staff were on the same page and and made those decisions fairly commonly. But this is intended to institutionalize that decision. So if you're referred for a misdemeanor, you get this many points. If you're referred for a felony, you get this many points. If you're referred, and you're already on an alternative, so that it takes that subjective piece out of it. You know, I recognize a name, or I recognize an address, or, oh, my goodness, he's, you know, he's stolen again. He just got in trouble last week, kind of thing. So the objective admission criteria. So the objective admission criteria. Looking at alternatives to detention, what is it that we can do to keep kids out of detention? It's already been mentioned a couple of times, but there really isn't much research out there that says detaining youth leads to improved outcomes. So if we know that to be true, what is it that we need in our community for those youth that need more than what they have but don't need that? What can we do to help fill in some of those gaps? Case processing, that's one of the areas we are just beginning to tip our toes in, and that's to look at cases and see, are similarly situated youth, are their cases being processed at the same rate? So is one kid languishing in the system for months and months, and another youth is getting through fairly quickly? And if they are, what are the unique pieces about that? Are there things that the system can do to expedite those cases as appropriate? I think the research, again, is very clear that if you respond to a behavior quickly, fairly, and consistently, there's going to be a much higher learning curve than responding six or seven weeks later, or four months later, when, at least at my house, nobody remembers what the problem was four months later, let alone any ideas on how to resolve things. The seventh one is reducing racial, ethnic, and gender disparities in the system. As I said, Monroe County has taken that definition and expanded it a little bit. We also want to look at socioeconomic impact, sex, looking at how are, how are those populations, if those populations are treated differently within our system, and what can we do to help kind of identify that disproportionality and provide resources and education? And then conditions of confinement. So that, that philosophy is my child standard, that if my child had to go to security detention, is the facility we are using, would that meet my approval? And to accommodate that, in 2019, we did a facilities assessment of Southwest Indiana Regional Youth Village, and we took a team of about 15 community partners with Owen County as well, and we did a full assessment from their intake to their mental health, to their environment, to their safety and security protocol. And within that came out a report of some recommendations that we would like to see changed. Our goal, or our, our result was to focus on what probation can change initially. So one of the advantages is it can take a while for the school to get schoolwork to the facility if the youth is detained. Well, we decided, gosh, why don't we reach out to the school and say, hey, this kid's detained, can you contact with their school person and make that change happen more quickly, rather than waiting for the facility to be responsible for reaching out to that, to the school? Oftentimes, youth who are detained don't have medications with them, which can be problematic if they are long-term medications. So one of the things that staff now does at the time of the intake is ask a parent, ask a guardian, ask law enforcement, is your child taking medication on a regular basis? Yes. Can you provide that medication to law enforcement when they're transported to detention center? So those kinds of things within that conditions of confinement. So those are the eight core strategies.
Thank you so much, Ms. McAfee. Commissioner Giffens, comments or questions?
No, I'm just grateful that we have this kind of program in our community.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Is there any public comment on this specific agenda item?
There is one hand raised.
Please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Marty Hawk, a member of the Monroe County Council. And I was around many years ago when there was discussion about building our own juvenile lockup facility, and I was very much against that. And I am very, very proud of our whole entire justice system, our court system, and our juvenile probation system, that we have managed to constantly keep as many youth as possible out of a lockup situation. If they do go, they're in and right back out as quickly as possible, and if they need longer time for treatment, if they go to treatment. So we have so much to be proud of here in Monroe County. We have our own youth shelter, which many, many counties do not have, and we, as local taxpayers, support that. Now, to begin with, I wanted to support it with a public safety tax rather than the way it went, but whatever we did, we made certain that we were always putting the youth first in this county. So many of the people, especially the protesters, do not understand all of the benefits that we already are doing for the betterment of this county and for the residents here. So I thank you, Christine, because I know what a great job you've done for years, along with Judge Gavin, our very own Judge, Tal Pharaoh, all of the people who stood behind making sure that we were doing the best we could do for Monroe County youth. Thank you for allowing me to speak this morning.
Thank you, Counselor Hawk. Is there anyone else that wishes to offer public comment on the agenda item?
There is one additional hand.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to respond to Counselor Hawk's statements. I hope this is an appropriate space to do that. Speaking as a member of the public, we are aware that these systems are out here. The public are the people who are going through this. The public, people like myself, people like my neighbors, county residents, are the people who are in these detention centers and who are avoiding being put in jail, who are benefiting from these programs. I think that it is, again, admirable that we are taking steps to lessen our harm, but I worry that all we do is just delay the inevitable, which is when there will be a tragedy, an armed campaign in our community. And unfortunately, because we're trying to prove a negative, because we're trying to prevent a tragedy, it's hard work. We can't pat ourselves on the back and say, you know what, we've solved this systemic problem once and for all. I wish, I wish we could say we've done enough, we have ended injustice in our law enforcement system, we are A-OK, but I fear we, as a county, we as a state, we as a nation, will never be there. And so until then, we cannot let up, we cannot congratulate ourselves, because all we're doing is delaying the inevitable until we truly change the system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muchler. Is there anyone else that wishes to offer public comment on this agenda item?
There do not appear to be any hands raised.
Great, thank you, Ms. Dayton. And with that, Ms. Rice, would you please call the roll on the 2020-2021 Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative Programming Grant?
Sure, well, but I'd like to say one thing before I do call that roll. I made some good notes about what Christine McAfee said, and I think those eight core strategic principles could be applied to our adult correctional system as well as the juveniles. So I know that that's something you guys are deeply committed to, along with the county council, so maybe that's something we can talk about in the future. With that, I will call the roll. Julie Thomas?
Yes.
Lee Jones?
Yes.
Penny Giffens?
Yes, I'd like to ask Ms. McAfee to send those to us. I only wrote down seven of the eight, so I'm not sure which one I omitted, so I'd love to see those in writing.
I can get those, I'll get those emails to you just very quickly.
Thank you.
And Penny, that was a yes, is that correct?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. And with that, we will move on to the next item, item D.
And now I will move to approve ratification of Indiana State Department of Health Agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Cottle. Thank you for joining us again. Good morning.
Good morning again. This is a ratification of a grant we've received for several years now from the Indiana State Department of Health for the distribution of naloxone, which is an opioid reversal, an overdose reversal drug. So we've been distributing it through partnerships with other service agencies, trying to get the training and the naloxone kits into individuals' hands that need that. And this is not a monetary award, it is for 1,000 doses of naloxone that we can distribute in the next few months and year. We will do regular reports until it is distributed.
Great, thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, can, do you have any information about whether the rate of overdoses has gone up or down, or stayed fairly constant?
Yeah, the difficulty with that is that not all overdoses end up in the ER, so we don't always know about that, and we encourage any time that somebody does use naloxone that that person get medical care, obviously, but that doesn't always happen for a variety of reasons. We have, we get kind of anecdotal reports in terms of the, from the SSP, the Surange Service Program distributes a lot of naloxone in the community, and they, clients will self-report whether they've themselves or someone else that they know of, and it does vary from time to time. More recently, we've heard kind of an uptick from different types of drugs, not always opioids. So it kind of goes through cycles, but it is difficult in terms of hospitalizations because not everybody ends up in the emergency room for treatment.
Thank you. Commissioner Giffens?
I went through the documents and couldn't find, how many of these kits do we get from the state?
A thousand.
Good.
And they will send them directly to us, and then we report quarterly, and, you know, there are standard reports in terms of what we've distributed, and we continue those reports until it's gone.
Ms. Cottle, if someone in the public has somebody who's at risk in their household, is it possible for them to receive a dosage of this?
It is. They can certainly contact our office, our harm reduction staff and education staff handle that, so we can do the training, it's relatively short, we can do that and do the distribution. Again, we also use our partnerships with Indiana Recovery Alliance, our care coordinators at Positive Link are able to do distribution, and there are others as well. The state does have an opt-in site, so there is a place that you can go and kind of see the different places that it's distributed to, but you can call our staff, again, call our education line, or send an email, and we can let you know what's available, what your choices are for how you can get that in the easiest way.
Right, thank you so much.
Is it still possible for people to get the naloxone just even through their own insurance? I mean, I remember 2016 opioid summit, that was one of the issues, that you can go and get it on your own?
Yes, yes. There is a standing order as well.
Right, excellent. And I'm just grateful that we do have the Surange Service Program here in Monroe County, and our neighbor counties don't, which is really sad, but I'm glad for what we do and for everything that the health department does to keep our residents safe as possible. So thank you for that. With that, does anyone have any public comment on this particular agenda item?
There do not appear to be any hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Ms. Rice, would you please call the roll on ratification of the Indiana State Department of Health Agreement?
Absolutely, thank you. Julie Thomas?
Yes.
Lee Jones?
Yes.
And Penny Giffens?
Yes.
Great, passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Ms. Cottle. Next item, please.
Move to approve Resolution 2020-35, approving food and beverage emergency grants. Fund name, food and beverage. Fund number 4932, in the amount of $100,000.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and we have a second. And as I noted on our last weekly press conference on Friday, we, for the time being, and hopefully we don't need this again, but who knows, but for the time being, we've closed the food and beverage grant process, and with today's proposals, we are very close to being very close to that magical number of $400,000, we're just going to be a few hundred dollars shy of that total. Pretty amazing. So first, Ms. Rice, would you talk about the Trailhead Grant?
Yes, I can, and I'll just lay a little bit of framework for this Resolution 2020-35. As you know, this is another way that the county, the commissioners and the county council work together to reduce harm during the COVID crisis. And these are, what we're asking you to do today is approve three additional funding sources. There are three, three grants listed, but one is actually a loan. So the current resolution has proposed $65,000 going to Wonder Lab, $25,000 going to Rising Star Gymnastics, and $10,000 going to Trailhead. What I want to tell you about Trailhead is that that is not a grant, it will be paid back. The agreement that the county will sign with Mark Bell, who he has already signed it and dropped it back off to the county, is that we would provide $10,000 to Trailhead for infrastructure improvements, specifically air conditioning, and that he would repay that by August 1st. So the other two, the $65,000 to Wonder Lab and the $25,000 to Rising Star are in fact true grants. And I believe that this puts you at the, sort of near the very limit, as you said. So if you approve this today, these will be the last grants that are, that are given out.
Right, thank you so much, Ms. Rice. Thank you for the explanation about Trailhead. Commissioner Jones, would you like to talk about Rising Star?
Yes. They really had some big problems that they had to solve. They actually had to move to a new building to be able to continue offering their services. But they've done a whole lot of things to adjust to the problems that COVID has brought, aside from just getting a new building. One of the interesting things is that the gymnastics association has made available a program that will allow parents to watch their children in their gymnastics classes from, from their phone, from their laptop, from various different devices, so that the parents never need to enter the building at all, which helps a bit with things. They also are buying a wall bar. In gymnastics, they use a bar similar to ballet that's on the wall, and you hold on to it as you do various things. They were concerned about spreading COVID on the bar, and so they've got one that comes with an antiseptic soap, no, chalk, which apparently prevents that from happening. I'm not quite sure how that works. Then maybe the most interesting thing that they're doing is, as school starts, there are a number of parents who are not anxious that their children go back to the schools, especially if masks aren't universally used. Many parents, both of them work, so they really didn't have any choice. Well, Rising Star is offering a kind of daycare program where the children will continue to receive their instruction, the parents can go to work, and it all sounds like it works out very nicely. There are going to be several teachers working with this, not to do the teaching so much, but to help with problem solving and things like that. So anyhow, oh, and I was initially concerned about how this related to tourism, but they hold a number of competitions every year that bring in a whole lot of people from around the state and even around the, particularly good facilities, and their previous ones were also, they often host some of the biggest ones, which does bring a lot of people to town.
Great, excellent. Thank you so much. Thank you for, for conducting that interview as well. Interesting. I like the way that they've adapted, that's, that's amazing. So I interviewed Wonder Lab, and they had I interviewed Wonder Lab and they have been doing some amazing things despite the fact that they've had to close to the public. So once the pandemic hit and they had to close the physical space, they then moved to create a series of programs for youth in the community. And they created and ran 12 programs a week, which really with, with kids being stuck at home and not being able to be going to school at that time, that, that made a big difference for a lot of families to continue their educational expansion and their great experiences with Wonder Lab. So they've had a really significant impact on their day-to-day operations. And while they've also been creating this online programming, they've also been working on redoing their exhibits and making many of them touchless or very low-touch items. They're bringing in a foot piano, sort of like that old movie Big. But they've, in 2019, they report that they had 82,545 children visiting. And of that, 63% of those general admission visitors came from Monroe County, 29% came from other counties in Indiana, and 7% came from out of state. So they truly are a gem and a really important part of, of who we are in Monroe County. And they certainly have done a lot of work over the, over the years to reach out to students outside the city of Bloomington as well. And they're just to be commended for their incredible thoughtfulness about reopening. Their first stage of reopening will be at 10% capacity. So they're really, they're being slow and careful and, and just so thoughtful about all of this. And just had a wonderful conversation with the folks at Wonder Lab. And I kind of thought, well, you know, how to plan for a pandemic is kind of a good Wonder Lab exercise too. So, so we are, the proposal I have before us today will help them with mortgage payments on their building, rent for storage, and some, some of their utilities, payroll and benefits. They've kept just about everybody employed throughout all of this. They have received some other funding. They had been in line to get a City of Bloomington loan from Food and Beverage, but they are returning that. That's going to be part of their agreement so that they're not taking from both funds at one time. But I've also, we also added in there some supplies, things like new filters for the HVAC system, which of course they had that all checked as well, and signage, water bottle filling stations, plexiglass, those kinds of things. So really just some amazing work that they're doing. And it's going to be very excited, exciting to have them open again, especially for families in our community. And with that, is there anyone that wishes to offer public comment on this item?
All right, there's one hand. Give me a moment.
Please give us your name.
Hello, this is Karen Jupson Ennis. I'm the Executive Director at Wonder Lab.
Good morning.
I just want to, good morning. I just want to thank you all for considering our request and wanted to give you some updated numbers on the enormous impact that this would have on Wonder Lab. Excuse me. In 2018 and 2019, from March through June, we typically raise about $300,000 in earned revenue. This year, because of COVID, we've, that's been decreased by an order of magnitude. So we've only generated $44,000 this year during that same time period. So I, I just wanted you to understand the huge impact that your support is going to have. With our current scenario and our modeling that we're doing for the rest of this year, our funding gap is going to be about $200,000, $212,000. That includes that we have, excuse me, have some money in the bank at the end of the year, no new loans, and our savings account is intact. With the county grant, we are projected to be able to reduce that projected funding gap by 30%, which is really extraordinary and is going to have a major impact on our financial situation. So anyway, I just wanted you to know that. And then the other thing that I wanted you to know is that as we roll out to reopen, we're really working on becoming a leader in the community for normalizing and putting in a really positive spin on those science-driven behaviors that are going to reduce COVID transmission in our community and keep us all safe. So we're working on a big Masks Up campaign. We'll, we'll be requiring masks in the museum for everyone H2 and above. So this is going to be a big deal, but we're working on messaging and photos to just convey to the community that this is a new normal thing and we've all got this. We'll also be enforcing social distancing and trying to make that as easy and comfortable as possible. So anyway, that's what we're working on right now and we can't wait to be open to the public in early August.
All right. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that has public comment to offer on this particular agenda item?
There is one additional hand.
Good morning. Can you give us your name, please?
This is Erin Brewer from Rising Star Gymnastics.
Morning.
Good morning. I can't speak as eloquently as Karen because I'm sobbing of gratefulness. And I just, I wanted to say thank you so much for considering us and for helping us out and that we too are committed to providing the safest and healthiest environment for our students and their families and our staff in this community. And this is just such an enormous help for us to be able to do that. And I can barely speak right now, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Oh, that's, that's really moving. Thank you so much. Thanks for taking the time to offer comment as well. We appreciate you both. And, and what, what Wonder Lab and Rising Star, they do very different things in the community, but they're both so important for families. So, and our community as a whole. So thank you both. Any other public comments?
There do not appear to be any hands raised.
Right. Thank you. Other comments or questions from Commissioner Jones?
As usual, I'm very pleased that we're able to do this.
Commissioner Giffens?
Erin probably doesn't remember me, but I knew her when she was still working at the YMCA and, and she had a big impact on kids even at that point. So I'm really, really tickled to hear about what they're doing to make a difference during this time. And I, before Wonder Lab, really even had bricks and mortar. They were at my house doing a birthday party for one of my kids. So I've really been watching what they've done over the years. I've talked with Director Ennis multiple times last year, and I'm just really, really pleased that we can help support people this way. It's amazing.
Yeah. You know, and I think about the opposite being true. I'm so glad that we've worked together on this and the council, thank you to the council for this as well. But this is, and the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission that gave us the okay to use the funds this way, and every resident who's put money into that fund. Because, you know, I think about what, what would have happened. $400,000 is a lot of money, but it doesn't go that far when you split it up among all of these businesses and organizations that have need. But I'm so glad that we've been able to do something, just something small to try to keep us in great condition economically, culturally, socially, when we can finally emerge from this pandemic. So yeah, it's, it's been a real, it's an honor to do this, for sure. That is for sure. So with that, Ms. Rice, would you call the role, please, on Resolution 2020-35?
I sure will. And if you'll indulge me for a minute, I do also want to thank all three of these locally owned, great businesses for the work you do. And particularly say thank you to Wonder Lab. They have allowed my older son to volunteer there since he was in junior high. He's now 25. He has about 1,400 hours volunteering there and it's really become part of his identity. And he absolutely loves it. So thank you to all the businesses, including Wonder Lab, for what you do. Calling the order, Julie Thomas?
Yes.
Okay. Lee Jones?
Yes.
And Penny Giffens?
Yes.
Thank you. Passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve the award bid, move to award, to approve the award of the bid to Building Association Health Building Interior Rebuild 2016 GO Bond, Fund Number 4807, $440,000.
Second.
Great. Thank you. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Rice?
Hey, I'll give you a little information on this. It is using bond money from a 2016 bond. And it will, the funds will be used to improve the current health building. And as you know, they are an extremely busy department here at the county, especially with COVID-19. And so these improvements they're building are quite necessary. The county received three bids. $440,000 was, was one, and that's the one you'll be accepting or we're recommending you accept today. It is the lowest bid that was responsive. There was another one for $446,000 and one for $458,900. So we are asking that you approve a contract today with Building Associates Incorporated that is located on Jonathan Drive in Bloomington. The project was Michael Shandry out of National, Indiana. The project is supposed to be finished by November 30th of 2020. There is a $50,000 contingency as well. We are using the contract you have before you as a standard AIA contract. It does, I'd like to point out that the termination clause in the contract is not specifically written in this contract, but it's referenced in a separate document. I pulled that separate document this morning. I sent it to you just so you'll have it in your records. But it does allow us to terminate this contract for any reason with cause or without cause, just for convenience, by providing written notice. Hopefully we will not have to do that. But in the, in the event that we would have to, you have some flexibility. So with that, if you have any questions, I can try to answer them. Otherwise, it is a pretty standard straightforward contract that will get wrapped up this year. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rice. Comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens? Sorry, Commissioner Jones? We'll go there first. Commissioner Giffens?
No, I was pleased to see it would be done by the end of November.
Yeah. Hopefully all will go well. Excellent. Any public comment on this item?
There do not appear to be any hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Ms. Rice, would you please call the role on awarding the bid and the contract, approving the contract with Building Associates?
I would love to.
Julie Thomas?
Yes.
Lee Jones?
Yes.
And Penny Giffens?
Yes.
Great. So the contract for Building Associates is approved unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And glad we could use a local business as well. Worked out really well. So excellent. All right. With that, item G, it's now to the Ms. Ridge Show.
Need to approve an indot contract for Hunter's Creek Road Faces 2 and 3, unnamed local road and street, Fund Number 1169, the federal contribution of $6,313,700. The local match is $1,578,425, for a total of $7,892,125.
Second.
Great. Thank you. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Ridge?
So this is Phase 2 and 3 of the Hunter's Creek Road project. Again, you read the, the amounts. The local match is $1,578,425,000. It's an 80/20 project. It's set to go letting in September.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
That I think the residents along there are going to be very relieved to see this taken care of.
Yeah, Phase 1 turned out really, really good down there. So Phase 2 and 3 should turn out just as good. Commissioner Giffens?
No, I'm just pleased that we have somebody like Ms. Ridge overseeing this.
Absolutely. That's for sure. Excellent. Is there any public comment on this item?
There do not appear to be any hands raised.
Thank you. Ms. Rice, would you please call the role on the indot contract for Hunter's Creek Road Faces 2 and 3?
I sure will. Julie Thomas?
Yes.
Lee Jones?
Yes.
Penny Giffens?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve a transfer agreement of roads between Indot and Monroe County after the construction of I-69, Section 5.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Ridge?
So we've been working on this agreement with Indot back and forth. As you know, we transferred roads in the beginning, probably five, six years ago, when they began to build I-69, some of our existing county roads. So we, they are transferring those existing roads back to us. And then also some newly built roads, such as an access road, Wakeport Road. So in, in some of the transfer agreement, you will see that we worked with Indot to make some long-term commitments with them, one being guard rail. We just don't have, it's miles and miles of guard rail to take on. So Indot is going to maintain that guard rail for the next 10 years. Also, there's some MSE walls that are huge that we also, it's out of our norm to be able to take care of something of that magnitude. Again, they're going to keep those for the next 10 years. One other thing that we had worked out with them, if, if all the bridges that cross over I-69 are indot bridges. However, when you do snow removal, you know, if they take Kinzer Pike, the county is on one side, the county is on the other side of that bridge. There's no access to get to that bridge. So they wanted to work out with the county to keep our plows down and just, you know, plow it so they don't have to try and find a way to access those bridges. So there's about six bridges that we agreed that we would go ahead and do only snow removal. However, our concern was that Indot pre-treats with brine. And we have never had the funds to set up a brine system, which is basically a saltwater mixture. You can go out up to two days in advance, put it on the roadways, and it helps with the bridges, keeps the road being less slippery with the weather, hilly conditions, things like that. So we were concerned of do, taking that responsibility on, of the bridges without doing pre-treatment because that is a standard that the city of Bloomington has a brine system and so does Indot. They use it nationwide. So if you look in this agreement, Indot is providing Monroe County $285,000 to help set us up a brine system. It won't cover total costs, but it will cover the majority of the cost to do this. The biggest part we've been to, we've talked to some vendors. We've been to Indot, looked at their facilities. We've been to City of Bloomington, looked at their facilities. It'll pretty well cover everything, but maybe the trucks of setting up maybe one truck in the beginning of putting a brine tank on it, so to speak. But it's an opportunity we could not pass up. It'll build the building. It will get the equipment. But it's an opportunity we could not pass up. It'll build the building, it will get the equipment. And not only doing it for those bridges, this is that we can use on Curry Pike, Business 37 North, our hilly areas that we get callouts that we have water and ice buildup in a certain area because we get those repeated areas and we can address those. It should save on overtime of being able to do a lot of this pre-treatment. So it'll take, I don't know that we'll have the system set up this year, to be honest. The only reason being is, you know, we'll have to go through a permit process. We'll have to go through to get a contractor to build us a building. So I don't know if we can do it by the winter months, but it's a great opportunity for Monroe County, indot stepping up to provide us that, that amount of funding to help us get going with the brine system. So I don't know, all that in agreement, but that was a huge part of that agreement. The total roads mileage that we're taking back in is 11,1 miles. So we anticipated it, we've planned for it. So it's not that we can't go back and maintain those 11 miles.
Thank you so much. Really exciting news about the brine system. I never would have thought that brine would have been that exciting outside of a kitchen environment at Thanksgiving. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I just completely agree with you.
Commissioner Giffens?
I think this will improve safety and this is again, another reason to appreciate Ms. Ridge being part of the county government.
Yeah, amazing work. What negotiation skills. You know, in addition to all the community crossing work that you do and this is really something. And as someone who's traveled a lot on State Road 45 northeast, all the way to its end. This is, it looks funny because it, it looks like it's, the road looks wet when they put this down and it takes a while before that disappears. But whenever I see that on, on State Road 45, I've always like, I better look at the weather forecast. There must be a big storm coming. Because sometimes that would be my only notice that, that something was coming and I had to be aware of it. So so that, it's, it's a, it's a great system and it really makes a big difference on a road like that, which is very hilly and lots of curves. So yeah.
For us, I have to give kudos to Toby Turner. He's our Highway Superintendent. He is the one that did all the, a lot of the investigation and took me to the places and contacted the vendors and so he's, kudos to him for, for working on probably way more than me.
That's excellent. Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item?
There do not appear to be any hands raised.
Thank you so much. With that, Ms. Rice, would you please call the roll on the transfer agreement of roads between indot and Monroe County?
I'd be happy to. Julie Thomas?
Yes.
Lee Jones?
Yes.
And Penny Giffens?
Yes.
Great. This passes unanimously. Thank you.
Right. Thank you so much. And we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move to approve Little Brothers Construction Change Order Number 17. Phase One. Fun name, local road and street, Fund Number 1169, in the amount of $10,585.93.
Second. Great, we have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Ridge?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, everybody kind of cut out, so I didn't know where we were at. So this is Fullerton Pike Phase One. The project has been complete. It's not closed out. We still have a lot of remaining issues to sort out with the contractor on that project. So Change Order 17, it is in the amount of $8,250. It's actually was caused due to during excavation for the signal foundations, which there were two of them. There was, rock was encountered at seven feet according to indot specifications when rock is encountered while excavating a signal foundation. And there's no existing excavation X item, then a change order is generated for this. So there was mobilization and demobilizations that are included in the cost since they had to come twice. The second change order is number 19. The contractor had to provide an overhead power drop to a street light at Old 37 War Road. What I'm understanding about that is there was such a limited space, you did not want to come back in and do that. A subcontractor to do that, which was Hoosier Company. So that was that cost. We really don't have much control over the quality company, so they make their own calls. So that was in the amount of $2,332,000.
Right. Thank you so much, Ms. Ridge. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Giffens?
Well, I've been in touch with, with Ms. Ridge about some of this. I find it really frustrating that we get a change order more than a year after it occurred and we're expected to cough up the money for it. I wish there was something we could do about that. It just doesn't.
I couldn't agree more with Penny. I have another, there's a couple more change orders that are, have been brought to my attention in the last couple of days from our contractor. One is in the
Nope, we lost you, Ms. Ridge. Hmm. Well, hopefully we can get her back. Must be having an internet issue. Hopefully we can get her back for the next couple of items. Is there any public comment on this particular item?
There do not appear to be any hands raised.
Great, thank you so much. If you would reach out to Ms. Ridge while we're doing this, that would be great. It might be, it might be helpful. It looks like we lost her. It might be helpful just to have her on audio only at this point. With that, Ms. Rice, would you please call the roll on the Change Orders Number 17 and 19 for Fullerton Pike Phase One with Little Brothers?
I sure will. Julie Thomas?
Yes.
Lee Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. And Penny Giffens?
Yes.
Okay, so the Change Order 17 and 19 pass unanimously.
Great. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Indot Agreement for Sample Road West of State Road 37 and I-69. Fun name, local road and street, Fund Number 1169, in the amount of a federal grant of $5,318,840 with a local match of $1,063,768 for a total of $6,382,608.
Second. Right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Ridge, we've lost connection with Ms. Ridge. But this is that 80/20 split contract. And it is for the western segment of Sample Road West of I-69. All of this construction on Sample Road is a result of having that highway built and the intersections created. I, if you're all right, continuing without Ms. Ridge being able to be present, we can do so. Are you both okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, excellent.
Sorry.
There she is.
Ah, you're back. Yay!
So anyway, I expect this to be an ongoing situation. I've brought in legal into it, so.
The change orders. Yes. Great. Well, we've moved on in your absence to the to Sample Road West.
Okay.
Yeah, do you have anything to add on that?
I don't. This is just the contract with indot for project coordination. So we're moving forward on the west side. We've bought all parcels. I think we only had two condemnations. But out of 26 parcels, everything else has been secured. So this is just the next step to keep.
Oh. Well. All right, so we have a, we have a frozen screen again and, and we might want to just put Lisa on audio only.
I might, might recommend that the next two, you could go ahead and prove in case there's any timelines that have to be met. And then you could, if you wanted to, discuss them in further detail next week.
Sure.
And ratify them, you know, again.
Sounds good. All right, so any public comment on the indot agreement for Sample Road? Any public comment?
There do not appear to be any hands raised.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Ms. Rice, would you please call the roll on the indot agreement for Sample Road West of I-69 State Road 37?
Yes, I will. Julie Thomas?
Yes.
Lee Jones?
Yes.
Penny Giffens?
Yes.
Okay, so this agreement for Sample Road is approved this week. And again, if you wish to have more detail, Lisa can provide a departmental update at the next meeting.
Sounds great.
Hi, I'm here if you need me.
Yes, excellent. So we've already approved it, but would you, do, can you offer some more information on it?
Yeah, this is just one of the water companies that's in the area for, this will be for utility relocation for the Hunter's Creek Road project.
Okay, we haven't gotten there yet. Oops, sorry, we haven't gotten there yet. I was just talking about the Sample Road. We never heard the rest of your comments on Sample Road.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's okay. We approved it because it's new about, but if you have comments to add on Sample Road, that would be great. And then we'll do the next one.
Okay, this is also an 80/20 split with indot. We have secured most of the parcels on this, all but two. And this is just for indot coordination for the project management of Sample Road.
Great. Thank you so much. Excellent. All right. So with that, Commissioner Jones, would you move on to the next item, please?
Move to approve a transfer agreement of roads between indot and Monroe County after the construction of I-69 Section Five.
A second. Um, I don't, this is
We, we did that.
I was gonna say, I, I thought we, yeah, I thought we were moving to item K. Yeah. Okay.
Are you guys waiting on me?
Nope, I just want to make sure that we are all on item K, which relates to the East Lawrence Water Authority.
Sorry, no. Move to approve East Lawrence Water Authority Agreement for Hunter's Creek Road Faces Two and Three. Fun name, local road and street, Fund Number 1169, in the amount of $268,000.
Second. Great, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Ridge, joining us by phone.
Yes, this is for utility relocation. It's a reimbursable agreement through indot also. So it's actually the water relocations for the reconstruction of the roadway project.
Right, excellent. All right, any comments or questions, Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Giffens?
No, I found some of the maps intriguing, but yeah.
Yes, they are.
Is there any public comment on this item?
There do not appear to be any hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Ms. Rice, would you please call the roll on East Lawrence Water Authority Agreement for Hunter's Creek Road Faces Two and Three?
I will. Julie Thomas?
Yes.
Lee Jones? Penny Giffens?
Yes.
Great, East Lawrence Water Authority Agreement passes unanimously.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rice. Appreciate your work. Thank you, Ms. Ridge. Thank you again to Mr. Turner as well for his work on the brine. And with that, we have no more agenda items. We don't have any appointments today. We I have a few announcements. I just want to note that to, to extend a thank you on behalf of the board to the county council and Tosh Williams for her work to hold and convene and manage the meeting last night, the community conversation on policing. It was a really great event. We thank everybody for participating. And we listened, we heard you, and we are impressed and amazed, but not surprised that we have such a compassionate and thoughtful community. So everybody is just offered some really, some really good, good ideas and we appreciate everybody participating. We do want to thank everyone who consistently wears face coverings while out in public. This is a sign of caring and respect for our community. And it's a really important thing to do. As noted earlier, we are no longer accepting applications for grants from the Food and Beverage Program at this time. But we do want to thank everyone who applied. And again, a big thank you to the organizations and businesses who are continuing to innovate and be creative and to serve the community in so many ways, just as we heard about today. Monroe County is continuing to operate as we have with the buildings closed to the public except by appointment. So if you have a business to conduct in, that you'd like to conduct in person, please contact the relevant department by phone or email and an appointment will be made. Yes, face coverings are required. We do have the ability to provide some for anybody who does not have adequate face covering. And we do include, we do also have access to face shields if somebody cannot wear a traditional or standard mask. So as we're moving forward and as we continue to deal with pandemic, our board and commission meetings will continue to be held on Zoom, at least for the time being. Please see the calendar at co.monroe.in.us. And you can find the link to the meeting as well as the agenda as available to you. As Ms. Moore pointed out, we do have at least one more blood tribe scheduled with the potential of yet a fourth. But that will be July 17th. Thank you to Monroe County Convention Center for being such a fabulous host site and allowing for that social distancing. I just wanted to note that we're, we're grateful to the Hoosier Hills Food Bank. They've given us an award. It's a 2020 Hunger Action Award, 19 Heroes of COVID-19. We're proud recipients of that. And really that, that thanks belongs to every single person in the community and to the county council as well for their help. So we're happy to do it and we're grateful for the good folks at Hoosier Hills Food Bank. We know that our area food banks have been stretched to the limit and beyond. And they have responded admirably and they have kept our community fed and nothing besides, you know, health, food and shelter. Those are the things that really matter. And that's one of the key elements of life and we're grateful for what they did and what they do every day. Any other announcements or information you'd like to get out, Commissioner Jones? No? Commissioner Giffens?
I'm going to also say thank you to everybody who attended last night's meeting. And I want to say big kudos to Michelle Dayton for the way she managed the whole thing. I mean, it was amazing, absolutely amazing. And while it didn't get a lot of discussion last night, I want to remind people that we are moving forward on getting the Stride Center open. And we hope that that will that that will help bridge some of the, the need for mental health programs here in the county. We, we know that that's a problem. We know that that's a problem. We've got a broken mental health system across the country and we are trying to do something about it locally with the help of a lot of people. It's businesses, social services, all kinds of people are really stepping up to the plate and making a difference.
Absolutely, that is an amazing program. We're just looking forward to that moment when we can announce that it's finally open. But so many members of the community have contributed to that and it really made it a success and a huge thank you to my colleagues for working on it. It's really an important, an important project and it will make a big difference in our community, both short term and long term. Anything else for the good of the order? All right, with that, happy 4th of July and our next meeting is July 8th, right here on the same channel, at the same time, 10:00 AM on July 8th. We look forward to seeing you all then, be well. Thank you.